Okay, we'll go ahead and get started in accordance with the open public meetings. Act P 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Plenary Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone could please stand for the pledge of
...
..............................................................................
Sorry, you want to call the roll? And then I'll...
Are you going to read the sunshine thing or whatever?
I just did.
I was writing down. Councilman in Morrison?
Yeah.
Theodore Chase? Um, okay. Erica in Asensio, not here. Sammy Chabon?
Ah.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Here.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yeah.
Charles Brown?
Here.
Robert Thomas?
Here.
Mahir Rafiq?
Here.
Rebecca Hilbert and Chairman Arcini.
Here. Okay, before we get started tonight, Davidson Plaza, New Jersey LLC, PLN 23-00009, not going to be heard this evening, will be carried to a date that will be determined this evening. So we will announce that unless Christine, you're ready to do that.
No, I'm not ready.
Okay, we'll come back to that. Minutes of the regular meeting, July 19th, 2023.
Mustafa and Rebecca are unable to vote, so anybody else can make a motion.
I will move it.
Second.
Councilman in Morrison?
Yes.
Sammy Chabon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Chairman Arcini?
Yes.
Let the record show Rebecca Hilbert's here.
Okay, so time to open to the public for any general planning comments not associated with the one hearing that we have left on our docket tonight, which is Jane Center, which will have its own public opening. If there's anybody wishing to come forward and make a motion to open to the public.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's open to the public for any general planning comment. And seeing no takers, and move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right, take two minutes to just discuss a little bit about how I would like the board's input on how we run a public comment, period. And I wouldn't say that this is specific to any one application, but it... I've been... Let me tell you where I come from and what I suggest, and we don't... I'm not asking for any action tonight. What I'm going to ask you to do is think about it. I'm going to say it again when we hear B9 again next Tuesday, and then maybe the meeting after that, we can move to incorporate something into the bylaws. So what I've always done is be fairly liberal in public comment. I've let some people, regardless of the content of what they're saying, go on for 20 minutes or so. At the last meeting for B9, you know, some of the public got a little flustered at the five-minute limit that we introduced, and I introduced that sort of that evening, as I do have at other evenings, not specific to B9, but when there's been a lot of public going to come, it's only fair to kind of make sure that everybody gets to be heard. Then there was a gentleman in the audience that informed me that we had let Arnie speak for four minutes and 37 seconds, and we had taken, you know, .59... 59 seconds out of that to respond to him, and I'm like, this is kind of nuts. So my proposal is regardless of the meeting, regardless of the hearing, we give the public five minutes. I reserve the right to let the person finish their thought, you know, if they're mid-sentence, not to cut them off and say, "Five minutes, sit down, come back," but let them finish their thought, not to start a new one, and they will have a maximum of one additional time to come back for an additional five minutes to introduce any new comment. And then, because so that way, instead of the rules coming after the sort of, you know, the, you know, my sort of feeling of the meeting, the rules are established, and we as a board can waive those rules any night, right? We see two people in the audience, and somebody wants to speak for 10 minutes, we can let them do that, right? That doesn't take away our power to do that or our ability to do that, but it just gives people some ground rule. And the other ground rule is I would ask the applicant, you know, whether it's Lanfrid or whoever, whether it's one of, you know, a witness or an expert or any member of the board, not to interrupt the speaker for the five minutes. Because I can't parse how much time we've taken out of that speaker's time, and I'm not going to sit here and try to figure it out. That way, when the person is done, then we respond, all right? And then the next speaker can come up. So that is my proposal. Don't need to comment necessarily, cogitate on that, and I'll say the same thing next Tuesday, and then we can sort of have another work session the next meeting and sort of firm it up. But there are planning board bylaws that probably no one knows, because I don't know that they've been distributed for a long time, they exist, and this can be incorporated into them. And I've asked Christine in the near future to either provide those electronically by hard copy or both, depending on everyone's preference, because new board members should read them. I wouldn't say necessarily cover, cover, but at least familiarize themselves with what they are. And it's been a long time since we've updated them, so maybe we should revisit that, but at least if we understand what's in them, which probably I would say, maybe other than a few people on this board, maybe me, Bob and Ted, probably no one knows what's in it, we should familiarize ourselves before we have a bigger discussion of what's in the bylaws. But, you know, we... Our docket has been so amazingly crowded these days that we really haven't had a chance to do some of this stuff, so hopefully better days are ahead. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say on that.
I would just add that I think your proposal is very similar to what we do at the Board of Education, and it works really well. So people get up, they speak for five minutes, Dr. Valley or whoever takes notes, and at the end, he responds to each and every piece, and so it's very clean-cut, and I think it would work really well for us here, too. So I support that.
That's encouraging to hear, because I didn't know that. It kind of sort of, you know, was reacting to, you know, the problems that were brought to my attention, which, you know, my fault as chair is, you know, I try to be gracious with public's time, because I used to be in the public before I was up here, and so I know how that is, but I'm grateful, Sammy, that you pointed that out. Yeah.
Charles?
Chairman Arcini, I personally think that the way you were doing it before was the most equitable way to do it, because the truth of the matter is, it's really dependent on the number of people who are coming up to speak. And so now if we're granting a minimum of five minutes, which most people are going to assume they have, what happens when we have an exception like a B9, where you have 20, 30, 40 people who want to speak?
Yeah.
And you have to honor that five minutes of time. So for me, I would like to give you discretion to reduce the time in the same way that you can increase the time. That will take into consideration the number of people who are here, which you've done in the past.
Yeah, no, that's not a bad idea. And in fact, you know, I was thinking maximum, not minimum of five minutes, but like...
Yeah, maximum, my bad.
Like you point out, nothing we do limits the board's ability to sort of read the room and do exactly what you say. And say, "Man, there's 30 people here now. If the applicant's attorney wishes to continue, you know, and gives us an extension, then we can let people have the five minutes." But if we're on deadline, as we will be for B9 next Tuesday, yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, so perhaps people should sign up early in the meeting so you can get a sense of how many people may speak. So if you're going to adjust the time, you can let everyone know there's an adjustment of time happening as a result of the number of people who've already signed up.
That's a very reasonable idea. I mean, these are the type of things, again, you may think of something, you know, in the shower in a couple of days and say, "I wish I would have said that." You know, if you happen to think about plating board matters there, I know I don't, but just saying. You know, we don't have to take any action tonight, but I think we need to have some rule established that we can then alter, but we can't just alter at will and leave the public sort of confused. And that was the impression that I got from some of the feedback I got after the last B9 hearing, is the public is confused, and rightfully so, because, I mean, this is not what they live on the daily, and I think that, you know, especially for B9, very confusing. When do you come up? Is it during cross? Is it during general public? Is it during when the testimony's being presented and then open to the public? It was... It's very unique application, but it did bring some common themes home.
Mr. Chairman, just a few things. We can certainly get you the... Your bylaws, you did review them last in 2019, and...
That's as bad as I thought.
Yeah, it wasn't as written... Yeah, it was... And actually, the five-minute time limit is actually already in the bylaws.
Yeah.
How exactly you manage that five minutes, that's really what you're discussing now?
Yeah.
Whether you wish to clarify that in your bylaws, I defer to the board attorney if you need to further clarify or if the existing bylaws are sufficient. But nonetheless, I just wanted to point out that, again, that five minute that you're discussing is actually already in your bylaws.
So I think that underscores the need that we all need a copy of the bylaws to read before we take...
Okay, let the record show that Ted Chase showed up at 7:35, and Erica did send me a text, she's on her way. So when she comes in, Chairman Arcini, I'm just going to mark the time she gets here and not interrupt the meeting, just so you're aware.
Yeah, that's fine, as long as she gets here before, you know, so she can, you know, vote on the application.
So do you want the bylaws sent to you, to the group immediately?
Yeah, send them to the group, you know, whenever you get a chance, you know, and I'm sure you have other priorities, but, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be before B9. I'm just going to really say the same thing I said tonight at B9, or maybe less, because, you know, to Charles's point. But then, you know, in a subsequent meeting, we can really take it up. But it's hard to take it up unless you know what's in there to begin with.
And am I to understand that going forward after you make this affirmation of the bylaws, do you want me to start taking like a list of who wants to speak? Is that what I heard you say?
Well, that was Charles's idea, and I think it's a pretty good one.
That's the only way you can truly judge how much time you're going to have available, because if a hundred people come up, yeah, I mean, you're in trouble from a time standpoint, especially if you're going to grant an additional five minutes, right? For a second comment.
Yeah, it would be helpful. So should we put in the bylaws if they don't sign up? In the beginning, they cannot come up? Is that something you want to do?
No, we don't want to overpenalize.
Okay.
We just want to give them something to be considerate of.
I mean, if there are 20 people that sign up and we have 20 to speak, that's not... That's a de minimis difference, to use planning terminology, but, you know, yeah.
You could put those things in the bylaws to cover cases like B9, but, I mean, if you take a case like tonight, are we really worried if someone speaks six minutes or three times or two times? There's got to be that flexibility for you.
And no matter what we write in the bylaws, the board retains that flexibility, so we will make that clear if it's not already clear. But, yeah, get us the bylaws, and we'll go from there.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a suggestion as well, which I believe you have made this statement before, and certainly we... Bob has at the zoning board, which is members of the public repeating the same comment that others have already said does not help the board make a decision, you know? So I think it definitely will help. I think, you know, whatever statement you make at the beginning, remind them that you're a quasi-judicial body that acts within the law and facts, so you need to give us good information to help you make an informed decision. The same person, you know, next person just coming saying, "I'm against it, I'm against it, I'm against it," doesn't give you new information.
Yeah, no, good point.
It only takes up time, and frankly, is only stopping maybe perhaps other people from coming forward and giving you good information. So you may want to make a statement to that effect.
I like that one.
In preparation for next week, is there a way to like post on the website that five-minute warning so people aren't surprised?
We can put it in the agenda, right? I think you've done that before in the public session where it says five-minute maximum comment time or something like that.
I have not posted the agenda yet to the system, so if that's something you want me to place on there, I can do so. I just...
Yeah, no, why don't we do it? Because I've seen you do it before, and I think, I think, but Rebecca's idea's a good one, I think, yeah? That way, everybody who sees the agenda picks up a copy on their way in knows, and, you know, of course, I'll reiterate it.
And should I ask for this meeting, because it is B9? Should I ask that they have to sign up beforehand or... And when do you want them to sign up with me prior to the meeting, like send me an email, or do you want me to put a list, like by the agendas and then grab it?
Yeah, yeah, just kind of like you do for the professionals, signing up and let them sign. You know, if you wish to speak... Did I remind you, sir? If you wish to speak, then, you know, please put your name down so we have an idea.
Okay.
Are you going to allow time to make that announcement and then communicate it to that audience? Because that's a change... That's a change.
Yeah, no, I'm going to say it at the outset, absolutely, because I see how many people are coming up just from where we ended last time, and so I think that, yeah, I have to do that.
And Ted had something to say, sorry. Ted, speak into your mic, Ted, please.
Turn it on, too.
I know that sometimes people don't decide that they want to speak until they've heard a lot of testimony of something, so I think it would be more if you want to be guaranteed time to speak, you sign up. If there's time at the end, walk-ons can be permitted. The other thing I think may be difficult is what happens when the attorney wants to interrupt the member of the public that's speaking? One thing to tell members of the board not to interrupt, but it might be difficult to tell the attorney.
Yeah, I mean, Pete just reminded me that we can't really prevent someone from speaking, so if even if they didn't sign up and they do something like what you suggested, we can't say, you know, we just decided ad hoc that we're not going to let you do that. But it at least will accomplish, I think, what Charles said, which is give us an idea where our flexibility limits or parameters lie, right? If there's 20 people signing up, we can do the math, right? If we have an hour left, we kind of know what that is. And if the applicant doesn't give us a continuation, which they really have no obligation to do just because there's a lot of public there, we could say, "Look, 20 people signed up, we got an hour left in the meeting. My math says three minutes per person." We can do that. All right, let's get on to the Jane Center, PLN 23-00011.
Good evening, Chairman and Board Members. My name is John DeLuca. I represent the Jane Center of New Jersey. As you're likely aware, this property is located at 111 Cedar Grove Lane. It's also known as Block 468.07, Lot 45. As you may recall, we appeared previously, and it was this board's determination that an item of relief that we determined necessary was not noticed, so we re-noticed, and we are here tonight seeking three variances, all related to a proposed archway and signs that will appear on the archway. And then the last item of relief that was now included in the re-notice is a relief from a condition to not realign the driveway which the archway will appear over. You're going to hear from our engineer tonight, Mitch Ardmann, who in a moment I will ask you to qualify as an expert. And I guess, without further ado, we should get to the testimony.
Sounds good.
Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, all true, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
Certainly. First initial F, Mitchell Ardmann, A-R-D-M-A-N, 575 Route 28, Raritan Borough. Principal with the Reynolds Group, I'm still a licensed professional engineer, as well as a licensed planner, and I will be testifying on both tonight. If the chairman would like me to go through any more qualifications, I can do that.
No, we've seen Mitch many a time, and if your qualifications licensure is in good standing, we accept.
Thank you, sir.
So Mitch, what can you tell us about the site, the use, and the proposed archway?
Certainly. So on the screen right now is our plan sheet SP2. That is the landscape plan that's the same as in your set. It is A1 I just had here a second ago. Yeah, there it is. January 2023, no revision, the same sheet that's in your set, just colorized for presentation. Hope we can call that A1. Certainly. That's sheet A1, so I'm going to blow that up a little bit. Okay, so again, the property before you, as said, is bounded in red. I'm outlining here is Block 468.07, Lot 45. It's 9.6 acre parcel. We have Cedar Grove Lane on the right side of the plan, and north is up on this plan. The site is developed with the existing Jane Center, House of Worship, basically in the center of the site. You have the driveway access into the property. You have parking on the north front side of the site, as well as surrounding the building to the west and south end of the property. There's an existing plaza area at the main front entrances to the building, as I'm pointing at here in the northerly section of the building, the northerly section of the site. And again, the driveway out to Cedar Grove, which is the one in-to-out driveway on the property. There's also a caretaker house in the front section here, as well as a stormwater management basin in the southeast corner of the property along Cedar Grove. The property is in the R40 zone. Surrounding properties, properties to the west is a R15, single-family zone and houses there. There's a new townhouse development south of the property, abutting the site, and there's an office space directly to the north of the property. Across the street, we have, zoom over there a little bit, we have the shopping center, and we'll get to a little bit of discussion about that. This is the northerly entrance drive to that shopping center. There's another one south of that existing entrance drive as well. So that's pretty much the existing conditions on the property. What we have proposed this evening is basically the critical part is the new entrance archway, which will include signage into the property. So that archway is going to have three signs on it. The structure is set back from Cedar Grove by 41 feet, and will include flush-mounted lights under that archway, and you'll see that a little bit more in another exhibit that I'll put up on the site. It's... We're also doing the construction, we're going to be enlarging the radiuses in and out of the property on coming in from Cedar Grove, so that'll help the turning radiuses into the property. A sidewalk is also proposed along Cedar Grove Lane for the full extent of the property, and you can see the plantings. I know there's been discussion with the board that over time, it seems like there has not been enough plantings on the property, especially from the frontage, and so we've made an effort to provide both deciduous trees and evergreens along that frontage to really make a nice appearance along Cedar Grove for the property. Regarding the landscaping in the rear also, abutting the residential properties to the west, there's a wooded area there. It's pretty significant woods, but there are gaps in there this time of year. It's pretty dense, and you can't really see through it, but in the winter, obviously you can, so we're going to supplement those plantings with evergreens in that southwest corner, abutting that R15 zone, and we're going to put some other screening in the further southwest of the property to more screen the parking lot. You may recall from this application in the past, there's a utility easement cutting through the property on this diagonal I'm showing you here. That's why there are no plantings shown in that area. That's pretty much what we are proposing. I'm going to get into some detail now on the sign, because that's a critical part of the application. This exhibit is the same as on the cover sheet, so we have that same colorized rendering on the cover sheet.
We'll call this A2.
Okay, very good. So as stated, that's on the cover sheet. It's the structure that we have proposed. It's 56 feet wide, has the pillar on each side of it. At the base of each of those pillars are a sign, so as I stated, there'll be three signs, so a 21 square foot on the left side and a 21 square foot on the right side. At the top, on the upper arch, there's additional signage there, and that'll be 57.2 square feet. So the total area of signage is 99.2 square feet. You can write under this what I'm calling a soffit here, which is basically the cross element on the arch. That's where we'll have some of those flush-mounted lights. That'll basically light up the roadway and give a little light on the structure itself, but won't cause any spillage off the property. So it'll just enhance the sign and the location there. And basically, we believe the sign will provide for a good sense of place in front of this entrance, the House of Worship. The elements on the sign, as you see, the supports in the top, they also follow the architecture of the building, especially at the two main entrance ways, and these are typical of what you see for Jane Centers, both in this country and around the world. And so it's really standard for the Jane organization to have these type, and it really, like I said, it'll relate to the building, it'll provide a sense of place, and I think it will be an enhancement for the property, especially regards to the landscaping that will supplement the signage and entrance. It will have a gate on it as well. I wouldn't say there's been a lot, but there have been some security issues over many years, so that'll just help to close up the property as needed. So that is really our proposal for this evening, as I said, this archway with the signage, sidewalk along Cedar Grove, improved access with the radiuses in and out, and then additional landscaping.
Mitch, I'd like to direct your... My next line of questioning to the additional relief we're seeking, which is a relief from condition. As you'll recall at our last meeting, the board astutely pointed out that, subject to a prior site plan approval, the driveway, a condition of approval was that the driveway be aligned with the driveway opposite Cedar Grove Lane with the strip mall that exists there. So my firm served an Oprah request on the Franklin Township Police Department, and they responded, and can you tell us about your review of that response?
Certainly. So they were very thorough in their review. The timeframe started in October of 2019 and went up to the present time, and that included an accident report schedule, basically, and I've put back up on the screen Exhibit A1. I've blown it up to show better the intersection, again, the existing Jane Center driveway and the northerly driveway for the Cedar Grove Shopping Center across the street. So that police report had accidents through that timeframe, as I said, October 2019 to present time, and it included 21 accidents. I also conducted another review. As the board's familiar, I've been working in the township specifically on Cedar Grove Lane with many applications, 20-plus years here, so I know it well, but I took the chance again, since the last application, to be out on site, to drive through both properties, both sets of driveways, make the many turns, and watch other vehicles make those turns as well, so I got the sense of how vehicles are moving through there. So in general, the condition was to align these two driveways so they would be perpendicular, and that is often something that is desirable for site design or for roadway design, but typically, and most importantly, if there's through traffic, because if there would be through traffic from the shopping center, Jane, or vice versa, you wouldn't want as much for the jog to be as you're going across the roadway there. So it's more important, in my opinion, is when it's lined up for through traffic, as with any roadway. Also want to make sure there's good visibility between the two. So again, if you're sitting at the shopping center driveway and looking at, the shopping center driveway does sit lower, so you're on a little bit of a slope, but you can see directly across, so you see the Jane Center, and you can see at this time now, I shouldn't know the date, but, you know, it's been many years, but as Cedar Grove's been restriped, there's a left turn lane heading northbound in this area, so that provides a safe turn slot, turning left, going north into the Jane Center. So the car sitting at the shopping center can see that car well, can see to the north well, and can see to the south. There is only one tree that overhangs that's part of the shopping center, that... There is only one tree that overhangs, that's part of the shopping center, that probably could get limbed up a little bit, but you can still see around it. It would just provide additional site distance. The road is straight and flat, so again, I believe there's good site distance. Similarly, out of the Jane Center, it's clear visibility in both directions. So now getting to the summary of the police report. Again, 21 accidents over four or so years for this busy stretch of road. I wouldn't say it's good or bad. It is, by far and large, the most of the exhibits were rear end. It's when somebody was at the light or slowing down and speeding up, the car behind didn't notice, pay attention, and they hit the rear. Most of the time, from my review of the police reports, they weren't severe accidents. It was somebody going at 10 miles an hour when somebody in front of them stopped and hit them. At these driveways that are in question here, there was one accident, a car making a left turn out of Cedar Grove to go south. It was not in association with the Jane Center. For the police report, they just didn't see the northbound car and cut them off. That was one of the accidents. There were two generally involving the Jane Center. One was a left turn in. They were slowing to make that left. For some reason, the car behind wasn't sure what they were doing. They went to pass on the shoulder. So I don't think anything to do with the alignment. It was a bad driving decision there. I would say that enlarging the radius there is going to help that southbound car more smoothly make that turn off of Cedar Grove. So would it have been in that accident? I can't say that, but it was not, the alignment from across the street didn't bear any relationship to the accident from my reading of the police report. And the third one was also somebody slowing in this area and somebody hit from behind again, not seeing that the car was slowing, and then tapped them from behind. So I guess in summary, I'm saying I've reviewed the alignment here on Cedar Grove. I've reviewed these intersections as well, the police report. I understand in a lot of situations, perpendicular driveways can be beneficial. I don't think in this case that it would create a better traffic pattern in the area, and I don't think that by review of the police report, it contributed to any of the accidents over the last four years. Based upon that, would request the relief of condition for realigning the driveway. Part of that also, we've worked with the county many times on this application. Would they let us realign it and do it? Sure, there's an expense to it. I know that's not the board's priority. The priority is safety, but I think I've shown that's there. But I think this driveway does function safely, and I think with the improvements on the radiuses in and out, that'll be another enhancement for the site.
So Mitch, question regarding your traffic testimony. So I confess I don't recall the original application some years ago. Why the board asked for the realignment? What the county's input was? And what in your professional opinion, if anything, may have objectively or substantially changed since then? That the applicant had this number of years to realign, decided not to do so, and decided not to inform anybody, but now when they're coming for this arch and the signs, all of a sudden, you know, it's a shining moment where, you know, they realize they needed to now ask for a variance. To me, that's somewhat neglectful, doesn't really restore the red credence to the board's faith in the applicant's ability to execute, because there's plenty of time to rediscuss this with not just the board, but the staff professionals, and simply come to a meeting of the minds. It seems more like they just decided to ignore that, and that's not something that I think any of us look favorably on. So can you comment on any of that?
As to the timing, I can't comment on that. I believe it, you know, the original driveway was in this location. The request for a realignment was subsequent to that. As we discussed briefly at the last hearing, several projects did not go forward for, you know, financial or other considerations, so things like the solar canopies weren't built.
Mitch, can you hold the mic closer?
Certainly, yep. So as far as timing, I can't speak anymore to that, just knowing that some of those applications did not go forward. But as far as just the need for it, yeah, we could always, would have been more prudent to sit with staff and the county and come to a conclusion on that. The recent county application, I can just go on the record and say that they made no requirement, as it is a county road, to realign that. I know you also, you know, had that as a condition, so you have jurisdiction as well, but the county did not feel that it was critical to realign the driveway and for the application.
Was the county asked that specifically? Because I have a few comments on some of the things that you...
Yeah, go ahead, Bob. I think you're very...
When the project was first approved, that was an original condition. The shopping center was extremely busy. Your 2019 date involves the middle of the pandemic. It also involves a little bit of a degradation of the shopping center over a few years. If you look out there now, there are a couple, two additions. That shopping center is becoming very busy again. It was once hailed as one of the retail success stories in Franklin Township with the business and the traffic that was there. You're kind of having a hard time convincing me that you have a major intersection, you have a landscape business driveway, you have a townhouse driveway, you have another shopping center driveway, and now the Jane Center driveway and this shopping center driveway across from it, all within about 500 feet of each other. I can't believe that traffic engineers are going to say that it would not be wise to have them lined up. Yeah, it's not a question of going across the street from the Jane Center to the shopping center. It's a question of two people trying to make a left turn at the same time out of each. And you've, there are so many driveways and so many cars coming from different directions on that corner, you can't tell me that it's good planning to allow another conflict like that. And I might sound differently, but I don't know what applications that didn't go through that would have affected this. It should have been done from day one, and how it wasn't done is beyond, how it was permitted to give a certificate of occupancy is beyond me. And I, for one, am not in favor of forgiving that at this point. That shopping center is now becoming very busy. And in addition to that, there was an affair over the weekend at the Jane Center where they were actually using the emergency driveway also for ingress and egress, which is not supposed to be permitted. It's time for this facility to get its act together. You also have an approval, I don't know where the status of it is, maybe it's not related to tonight, but there's an approval there for solar panels in the parking lot. Is that ever going to happen? Now, that's another dynamic that you're talking about that's off the emergency driveway. You know, what is the game plan for this place? And I see personally no reason not to compel lining up the driveway. You still said it makes good planning. The county, the county doesn't do very much in my mind for anything, any issues when we have traffic issues, you know, or site plan issues with traffic, you know, except stamp their approval on what we do or take away everything we try to do. You know, the county is the one who wanted a steel guardrail in front of the restaurant at the end of the street, about 100 feet long. Totally overreacted. You know, so that's what I think of the county. I, there's other people here, I will not vote for this application if it's not lined up.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Over here. Yeah, hi. Was there an engineering need to not align it, or is it just you're asking for the variance? Is there a reason why it wasn't done that's engineering-based or planning-based, or is it, I was just looking for that?
Yeah, so just real quickly, it wouldn't be a variance. It would be a relief of condition.
Okay.
Just for technicality, but I understand, Mr. Thomas, your points as well. So no, I can't say that there's an engineering reason. It's not that there's a site distance, or we had to put a detention base in there, or there's something physical or designed...
There's nothing in the way, basically.
There is not.
Okay.
There is not.
That was my question, thank you.
Okay, just, Mr. Thomas, and I, believe me, I know you know this road better than anybody else in this room, and been here a long time. Looking at that driveway, as you do though, also know, that is the northerly driveway, and that is kind of, you know, the tail end a little bit. There's not near as much activity on that one as there is in the southerly one. You are correct. Two people making a left out of Jane and a left out of the other entrance, that's a critical time, but that's where I said, that's why I sat there at both intersections, and you, there's a clear view of each other. Would it be better if it's lined up? Potentially, but is it better, is it better that one's accident-prone and the others? I don't think so. I think this works well as it is lined up now. And again, with the left turn slot, that anybody going north, that gives a waiting spot for the traffic, so they're not guessing there, and I think you do have less movements coming out of that north access also.
You have over the last few years, but I think if you went out and did a survey, you're going to find that the volume out there coming out of the shopping center is a lot more than it was when the pandemic was at its peak.
Yep.
And the other issue is, those two driveways work well the way they are from that point of view, mainly because when there is a big affair at the institution, at the Jane Center, there's police traffic control. But when the police aren't there, it's not the same situation.
Yeah, and I was really trying to get to the same question that Sammy was. So, I mean, I was trying to logically understand whether conditions or assumptions had changed substantially since the initial approval. So I don't think the board likes to second-guess itself. There was a reason that that was made a condition of the approval, and there was a reason the solar panels were made a condition of the approval, and the applicant said they would do these things and haven't. And I'm just trying to realize, obviously, you know, the sun still comes up, so I think the solar panels still have just as good a justification as they did there. I haven't heard anything so far that makes me think that conditions on Cedar Grove Lane have changed substantially since that was asked. And I mean, you just said in your own words, it's potentially better to realign the driveways. Maybe that's not the level where it has to be, you know, and as I've been talking to Jim Clark, in a substantially better alternative when you're going for a variance level of proof. But would a reasonable person, and, you know, Mitch, we really respect your planning acumen, because you've been before this board many times, if you say it's a potentially better solution, you know, that has some weight, and I've heard no reason why it can't be done other than the applicant doesn't want to. That's not good enough.
The only other thing I would add is that for an initial design, and you say lining them up straight ahead, understood. This has been operating all these years. That's why we went back to the traffic report. Yes, there was pandemic years in there for a chunk of them, but kind of the proof is in the viewing, is how the operation goes, and I think that substantially goes why, that I can still say I think this operates more than safely in this location. That's why it could be justified to waive it. Yes, I've been here a lot. I do not stretch myself on my opinions out here, and I wouldn't say it if I didn't believe it, if I didn't spend more than a few minutes out there looking at the operations. So that's why I think that it can operate safely.
Chairman, I have a comment. I also respect your acumen here. I think on this one, though, you're giving a pass, or asking for a pass, and it's a potentially dangerous one. I think the perception or the perspective that you bring is very auto-centric. You're thinking about how cars are moving, you're not thinking about how people are moving. And as someone who visits the Mohus restaurant, there way more than I would like to. I think I have the receipts to show that I visit that site more often than you have to study the traffic. And one thing that I see quite frequently is people walking from that location to the shopping center, and it is particularly confusing to a pedestrian to have to deal with two conflicting left turns with offsetting intersections. And we also have to deal with the reality that while traffic doesn't usually travel straight through across these two intersections, they still do occasionally. And so I think if you expand the view beyond an auto-centric one and prioritize the pedestrian here, you would advocate more strongly for those intersections being perfectly aligned. Lastly, I would say, my first planning board meeting, somewhere in that ballpark, I'll never forget, there was a gentleman, and one application doesn't have anything to do with the other, but there was a gentleman here who had not put trees on his residential property, and we made that individual go back and add, I think, a few trees. This is a condition from the start. We should not be setting a precedent around people not properly aligning intersections because, quite frankly, it's bad planning. And so for that reason, I would not be in support of relieving that condition under any circumstances.
I do have a member of the applicant operator here who can provide some testimony, not necessarily about the condition to move the driveway, but there were other conditions that were brought up in the past, specifically solar panels, that I think would be prudent for my client to address. So if it would be all right, if he could be sworn in to testify?
Just before we do that, you had a handout of, I believe it is, the materials that were provided in response to your Oprah request. I don't know that we ever marked the package you submitted. Can we mark this A2?
A2, certainly.
And this will be the Oprah response received by your office, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I could swear you win. Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please, for the record.
Yeah, it's M.I.H.I.R., Mihir, last name Shaw, S-H-A-H. The address is 229 Durham Avenue, Metairie, New Jersey. Thank you. So I think one of the things that is about the solar panel. So we have gotten approval, and we already awarded this project to a vendor called Sonari Sonar, but for whatever reason, we have a dispute with the vendor, and we have lost money with that vendor. So that's a reason that project has been on a hold. I have taken over the office earlier this year, and now we are revisiting it and trying to get a couple of other vendors to come in and try to get us a better quote so that we can take over that project and try to continue with. So there is definitely an intention of having a solar panel installed into the location. The only reason it has not been done through is we have burned our fingers, so we want to make sure that we are mindful of picking up the right vendor when we are going to take up this project again.
Mr. Chairman, let me just provide a little bit of clarification, just again, so the record is clear. The driveway issue and the solar are two very different things. You're talking, the driveway apparently was a condition of a board's approval. The solar, the proposal to put solar panels in the parking lot was not a condition of a board's approval.
Okay.
It was the applicant had made an application to this board because they wanted to do it.
Okay.
So they had, they received site plan approval to do that, but it wasn't a condition or requirement of your approval.
Got it. Thanks, Mark. That's good clarification. No, I appreciate that, and so I'm sensing a theme, a theme here with this applicant in particular, and that theme is communication. Communicating the solar panel status might help to the professionals, notwithstanding what Mark said. Communicating, I mean, how long has this been constructed since? It's been a number of years, right? You know, if the applicant had come back to the board relatively in some proximity to the original application and said, "Look, you know, we'd like some reconsideration of this condition," you know, just time passes and there's no communication. And I note the note in Mark's report about, you know, not that it has anything to do with the planning, per se, but communication about the number of people at events, okay? So... So it seems this applicant just needs to just do better. Notwithstanding everything we said tonight, which doesn't take away from the, I don't think anything the board has said, but, you know, needs to be a little more communicative. And if they were, probably the situation we find ourselves in tonight might have been avoided.
I have a housekeeping question for actually the board attorney. Given the, this board's apparent inclination not to grant a relief from a condition, the thought crossed my mind that I, we request to bifurcate this application, but I don't know that that's technically possible, given that this is a prior condition. In other words, you know, seeking the variance relief for the signs in one vote, and then the relief from condition in another vote, because...
I'm sorry to interrupt this again, but there's a lot of good things about this application. The sidewalk, the gate, the whole thing. I don't understand what the hesitancy is in terms of the driveway. You actually just need to make an entrance that's lined up with the other one, and it could curve back into the existing one. I don't, I'm not a construction expert, but I'm not sure I understand what the big resistance to this is. As Mr. Brown pointed out, and I forgot, the sidewalk is welcome because you do have a number of pedestrians from your institution that come back and forth across the street and go back. And back up in the sidewalk along where it's going will be helpful on that to get to a crosswalk. But, you know, this is much for your members as it is for anybody else. It's not like you're asking, anybody's asking to build anything, a castle. You know, it's a little bit of, it's realigning some pavement to make things safer and to make it a better application. For years, which is another issue that I'll bring up again, you've gone out basic landscaping forever. Now, there's a lot of loose ends in this. You've got a beautiful place, but what we see from the street is the lower end of it. There's no street trees, there's no landscaping around the house. You've got two driveways beside each other, misaligned. For years, you had a sign that looked like a beat up real estate sign. Now you have a nice gate, it's an attractive entrance. I'm not against any of this at all, but let's do it right for the first time.
Yeah, so let me just address the attorney's question here about bifurcating. On its face, as a planning matter, I wouldn't have an issue with it. However, where I come down is not very different from what Bob just said. I have a belief based on the past history of the applicant, that one scenario that could play out is the applicant gets relief for the signs and the archway construction. And says, it's gonna take us a little while to do that driveway, to plan it out. Let's throw up the archway and those signs on the existing driveway. I don't have a warm and fuzzy feeling that this is getting done in the right order. So therefore, I would not like to bifurcate this.
Mr. Chairman, let me offer another point, too. That archway is proposed over the driveway. If the driveway is gonna switch in terms of its alignment, I think you might want to see its alignment with, you know, with the, you know, its location with the actual alignment. I also, there are some comments on the TRC report as far as the landscaping. I think at the end of the day, what I'm hearing, I think we're all hearing from the board, is that the applicant needs to go away and come back with a new plan. I think they were gonna, if the board was going to approve it tonight anyway, they were gonna have to redo the plans and submit for compliance. If the applicant takes the opportunity to revise the plans, to do the alignment as the board is discussing, addressing some of these comments in the board's, in the TRC report, they may not actually lose any time at the end of the day.
Can I ask a question around the sidewalks? So is that depicted here anywhere? I just wanted to know. And does that extend to the building, or is it just along the street? Okay.
Mitch, can you repeat that into the mic? Along the street is the proposed driveway.
Yeah, I mean, depending on how many people are going in and out. I've heard multiple times now that people are going in and out of the center and crossing the street. It might make sense to actually extend it so that people can safely get from the building to the other side of the street, especially if you're gonna be reconstructing the driveway anyway. So that would just be a thought.
So interestingly, I wasn't here when this application was put before the board. But this past Saturday, I happened to be in that driveway. It was a perfect storm. There was a pedestrian crossing, there was a left turn. I was trying to get into the left. There was a car ahead of me making the left, out of this, coming out of the shopping center. The car ahead of me aggressively did turn. Nothing happened, there was a pedestrian crossing. I unfortunately, there was too much going on, so I had to give up and make a right. So to avoid the whole situation. So I think it would, you know, coming into this new, hearing it, it probably would make sense just for your sake and for, you know, the community to align the driveway.
Ted, sorry.
I wanted to ask, what is the text on the 21 square foot signs, the little signs on the side? I can see that there is a text in the picture, but it's not readable. Which is really a question about what is the need for those signs?
So those are the names of the sponsors who is going to be donating the funds for, you know, building the construction of the gate. So what you see over there are the name of the sponsors who will be funding this whole project.
I would think that could be commemorated somewhere else. Well, I, one of the suggestion is, instead of having those signs facing Cedar Grove Lane, have them facing inward toward the driveway.
Those signs are going to be on both the sides, the same signs. What you see, so basically, people walking in or driving in as well as driving out, they will see the same name on the sites there.
This is another relief, though, that you're requesting, right? Like, what is the actual relief that's being requested here? What's the delta?
Yeah, I didn't get to the planning, the actual variance testimony, so that I can get into, or depends how we want to go with the application, I would say.
Well, before you do, because I think there's some premise around a gate for crime. Can you just expound on that a bit? Because I have concerns regarding, you documented in the traffic reports that there have been a number of rear end collisions. And so I just need to know more about how this gate will operate, and what's the justification for a gate? It doesn't seem as welcoming from a community standpoint.
Yeah, so this is right now, what we, the gate that we have is more of a manual gate. And the similar manual gate will be installed in there, so that way, you know, we can lock it out in the night. Because what we have seen in some of the instance where, you know, people are driving around the center and walking in into where, you know, they are not supposed to be there because of private property, but we are still seeing people coming in into that area. So we are trying to use that. And if you notice right now also, the gate that, or the manual gate that we have, we try to close them up in the night, so that way at least it's secure that way.
And so the gate is intended only to stop criminals with cars, correct? What if they arrive on foot?
Again, the point is that, you know, mostly in the recent past, that what we have seen in last 12 years, we have only one incident where we have a break in in one of the caretaker's house, but they came from the other side of the property, not from the main gate or main entrance out of there.
So you want the gate for a crime that happens once in 20 years?
No, we need the gate for two reasons, right? One is basically what we have seen in the recent past is, you know, now because of the next door, we have the new properties coming in, right? So there are a lot of walk-ins are coming, there are a lot of drives or a car coming in, parking into our parking lot, staying it overnight, where we don't have an overnight parking except the caretaker's home that is there. So there are only two cars that gets parked in. And if someone, for whatever reason, from the some members are putting their cars in, they do have to notify the office to make sure that they're putting their car in, so that we know that whose car is there in the parking lot. So we want to make sure that anything that is because of the next door residence, there are a lot of cars that are coming in, and we want to make sure that we can avoid that by having this gate to protect it in the property.
So Ted already asked a question on the signs, and, you know, regard, you know, Mitch, it's up to you. But regardless of the disposition of the application tonight, we're perfectly fine to like discuss the signs if you want to, just so you can get our feedback. It probably is productive, so that if you do have to come back, then there's a, you know, you have the whole picture.
That makes sense, that's fine.
I mean, we could start with the staff reports, well, the TRC report in this case, I guess, or mostly Mark's report. And, you know, what, if there's anything you couldn't comply with. The only other report I have right before me right now is the Somerset County Planning Board, and they asked for certain things that you'll have to give them anyway, so that's clear. So you could start with maybe Mark's report or whatever, I think, otherwise I don't.
Right, so on Mark's report, I think we're on review comments. Number one talks about the variance, which I'll get to. So point two talks about landscaping that we've discussed before. So the short of it is, we have no problem working with Mark and staff to add landscaping to supplement in the different areas that were discussed. And specifically, as Mr. Thomas said in his bold item four, on the caretaker's residence. So all those items, including the caretaker's residence, to add landscaping. Any other technical items of sheet numbering and things like that, of course, we'll address. So, yeah, we will comply with Mark's comments.
The gate, height of the gate's not gonna inhibit any truck deliveries or anything? Or maybe there aren't any tie enough to accommodate?
Yes, it is, as well as the fire department, so.
Fire department, too?
Yeah, it's, yeah, Mr. House, we clear his, well, clear his fire trucks, yes.
On this sign, is it, so I know there are the two at the bottom, right, on each pillars? There are the individuals who have donated to build it. What about the one on top?
That's gonna be the name of the center up on top there.
Is it in English?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Jane Center of New Jersey is...
And if you see, if you notice, there's a symbol on the, there's a symbol on the top which has the circle and the two dears, and it has relevance in Jainism. That's the reason that you see that kind of design on top of that name.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so from a planning standpoint, to summarize the variances. So there are three variances. First, the number of signs. One sign is permitted. These are technically three signs with the one on each side and the sign over the top. Square footage, since we are in the R40 zone, 25 square foot maximum, 99.2 square foot proposed. And the height is 10 foot maximum, 28 feet is what's proposed on the top of the archway. So that is our proposal. And as far as testimony regarding these signs, basically, we believe they can be approved as C2 variances for this site and the advancement of the municipal land use law. As I described, the signs are a critical component of the archway. And as I also noted, these archways are typical for Jane centers around the world and also, you know, around the state and the country. They represent the religious and cultural values and activities at the center, and they reflect the style of the architecture of the building, and I think they go well to augment that style. In regards to the municipal land use law, the purpose is noted under the land use law 40:55D2. We believe that purpose I is what is advanced by proposing this application. And purpose I is to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. And so, as I said, I believe this is good civic design. It's in scale with the property, and again, represents the religious and cultural center and complements the architecture as I described. It's, the design is supported and enhanced by the proposed landscaping along the entire frontage that we have shown there. And since the project is well designed, I do not believe it will result in any substantial detriment to the public good. I also do not believe the sign will substantially impair the intent or purpose of the zone plan or the zone ordinance. So regarding any negative criteria, again, I don't see any substantial negative effect of the signage for the reasons stated. I believe they're well designed. The traveling public, I think, will see it as a well designed feature to the property. So I don't, I do not see a negative effect of this sign. Therefore, I believe the benefit of granting the variance, as I stated, good civic design, promoting the culture and religious center, would substantially outweigh any detriment, any detriments. Therefore, the variance can be supported, and I believe granted.
Thanks, Mitch. Does the board wish to provide the applicant any feedback on the signs? And not whether they, you know, would grant a variance or anything, but just planning feedback on the signs?
I have a comment. First and foremost, Mr. Shah and others, I think your property is a beautiful site. The architecture is beautiful. I also highly respect the cultural and the religious purposes behind the design and the intent. I don't know if I agree with that from a donor's perspective. Asking for a variance to essentially honor those who have donated for the construction. I think that could be done elsewhere on site, thus cutting down the need for additional signage.
Chairman, I have a comment.
May I, please?
Yep, so the arch is an integral part of many of Hindu temples, similar culture. And I think we will notice a similar arch on the temple on Amal Road, which is bigger than this, I think. So I really don't have any issue with the proposed arch. I support it, it's part of your culture. It's beautiful, so I don't have any issues with that. But the signage, I think Ted brought it up, if it's a must. It can be a plaque inside at the entrance of the temple. I'm sure there's other plaques of the donors there, so it could be, there could be another plaque. If it is, doesn't have to be there, people are gonna be just driving through. I don't think they're gonna stop and really read the names that are there on the signage there, unless it's large enough, like your name on the top. So I would say those sign of the donors can be moved elsewhere where people can actually stop and read and pay respects then.
And an idea might be to integrate them somewhere into the landscaping near the temple or something like that, near the actual center? Do it as a garden or something like that? I mean, really, you'd get, kind of be a win-win. It is hard to see what benefit they would be derived from putting them where they are.
Is there still a variance needed if those two, I guess they're 28 square feet each, signs are removed? Is there still a variance required for that big one?
Yes, so we would get rid of the one, one variance is the number of signs. We would still need the height, and the size of that still would exceed the 25 square feet. But we would be down to, you know, we would eliminate that, the first variance for the number of signs.
And I think there, I think Councilman Ram stated it very well. I think that, you know, obviously, the height, if it's on an arch, kind of goes with it. But it's sort of in keeping, right, with the intent of the property, with the intent of the center. And I think I would have no problem with that.
So I have a quick question. How many signs are there in the arch altogether?
Three. And we're counting on each base, so that's one plus one and one on the top.
Two on the other side, right? So that's one, two, three. Is there one on the other side?
Yeah, so, and I'll defer to the...
Six, right?
Planner, but this, for double-sided sign, I think we've typically counted that, but this is such a unique situation. I mean, when you have a, I, I think in that situation, I think that technically would be six. And the reason I would state that is, when you have a, your typical pylon sign, you know, on a post, and the message is the same on each side, we count that as one sign, it's not two separate signs. Here, structure is not really a sign. I mean, if we counted that as a sign, we would say the total square footage is, you know, four hundred square feet. You know, this is signage that's being placed on, on a different structure. So I think if we don't consider the archway itself a sign, then they're technically placing six different signs on that structure.
And there have been a few questions about the need for the names of the donors on the archway itself. I'd just like to ask Mr. Shaw, you know, why, why is it necessary, as the operator of the property, to acknowledge the donors in this location?
Yeah, so one of the reason that, two reasons, right? Like, most of the projects that we've done within the Jain Center of New Jersey is based on the charity that is coming in, and we want to make sure that the recognition, and you know, people needs recognition, people needs that name to be seen, and that's the reason that we need to put it up in there, which is more of a visible area. I understand the point, what the board is saying, that, you know, the intention is not there, that people walking or driving it, passing by through the arch can read that, it's basically that they know that their name is on the gate. So that's one of the primary reasons that we need that location to put their names in.
Appreciate that. I want to follow up on Mahir's point. So would it then be, if we do not grant this variance, that the only sign that would remain is the very top one, and that the one behind it and the ones on the bottom? So basically, we'd, we'd only be doing one and then the other five are removed? Is that the impact of not approving this variance?
Well, I think, again, since this is such, well, I think they would still, the Jain Center of America, or the Jain Center of New Jersey, that sign's identified as fifty-seven point two square feet, and for a place of worship, the maximum sign square footage is twenty-five. So they still have that. And is that consistent with what your testimony is?
So this is a combo variance?
Yes, it's a, so, yes, it's a combo variance, and, and yeah, that's my testimony. What's a combo variance?
It's like a combo meal, where you got like two and one?
Something that's sort of most, right?
Making up tur- and then technically, you know, you, you know, we identified sign height. Again, the sign is, you know, for, for a place of worship can only be ten feet in height, and this is being placed, you know, twenty-eight feet. So it's higher, so it's, you know, it's, you know, but again, a few minutes ago, I said that the structure itself is not a, is not a sign. But this is, again, this is such a unique situation, it's, you know, I think technically, the intent of the ordinance is the signs are only supposed to be ten feet above the ground. Here, the Jain Center of New Jersey is twenty feet and twenty-eight feet in the air, so we identified that as a variance. So I think sign height and sign area for the Jain Center would still be variances.
Okay, but to my question then, if we didn't do the number one, then the only one that would be allowable is that top one, is that correct?
No, because I think the top one, again, is still fifty-seven point two square feet, is that correct, Mitch? Yeah, but he's saying the number of signs.
I'm trying to parse it apart.
Yeah, okay.
Because there's different variances.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not understanding the question. If I, if I didn't answer it, I apologize.
Just the total number of signs. What Sammy's asking is, if we were to say, we're only like, the sign on the archway that says the Jain Center, that's now one sign.
If it was one sign and not on both sides, then that would, if it's only that one sign that you're seeing right now, and not on the backside, then the variance for the number of signs would go away.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay, sorry, I didn't understand.
No, 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 that's it, yeah, thank you, thank you.
But, Mr. Healy? I'm, I'm, now I'm a little confused, sorry. Because I, I thought it was your interpretation that the two-sided sign is one sign.
No, in fact, no, because a few minutes ago, I, I explained that if this was a, your kind of typical sign where this, you know, it's a pylon sign, you know, sign on a post, you know, that's, usually, you, you don't consider both faces as two different signs.
Right.
Because, but here, this is, this is, we're not considering that, that the archway as a sign. You are putting two separate signs on each side of that structure. Of that non-sign structure. No, I think, no, that, this time I am answering the question, whether he's understanding it or not is a different question.
Well, they're, they're constructing a structure and putting a sign on either face, it's no different than having a building having a, a sign on the front and back of a building.
That, that's a very good analogy, yes. If they're building a building and putting one sign on the front and one sign on the back, that's two different signs.
Right, so you, that's building an archway, and the archway is not a sign, the things that are affixed to the front and back of it are the signs.
Exactly.
Got it.
Thank you, that's a good, good analogy.
I try.
So, so Mark, just for that, is that then a variance in terms of the height? Because using that building analogy of where that goes on the archway, is that still a variance?
I mean, this is a matter of interpretation, and I, we, we've, I opine that that, that is a variance.
Okay.
Because they're putting it twenty-eight feet in the air.
Okay.
As opposed to ten feet, which is the maximum for a freestanding sign.
If it was a sign, but this isn't a sign.
It's just, the structure's not. The structure's not, the sign is a sign, but the structure's not a sign.
No, I get it, I'm just, I'm wondering if they just put that same thing on the top of their building, the actual building, would it have been an issue, or would that have been okay, if it was twenty, twenty-eight feet in the air?
It's a good question, let me look at the ordinance and find out what.
Okay, great, thank you.
I think in, in, based on my recollection of the ordinance, and I'm not trying to speak for your, your plane director over here, but it would be, it would be a different type of sign. So this, this is a freestanding sign, and I think it would be a wall-mounted sign. And I, off the top of my head, I don't know what the...
Well, I guess this is the feedback, and so I'm glad we had this discussion, so that next time around, we've got all these answers.
And just, just to clarify the proposal, because the, the report did indicate that it, it's three proposed signs, and now, I guess the interpretation, maybe with a little bit more clarity, is that it's six. Little bit more clarity, it's actually five. The Jain Center of New Jersey will only appear on the front-facing side of the sign, it will not be facing the, the building as well, but the proposal is for the donors to appear on both sides. So there would be five.
So what would be on the other side, over here? The Jain Center of New Jersey is on the front, right, facing the street? What would be on the other side? This design would be this, do you have a visual on that?
Yeah, it will be, it will be blank there, it will be just on the front-facing, which is to the road.
Okay, will, will it be a design similar to that's in the front?
Yeah, it, it, no, it will be have a design, so it will look artistic, but not new.
Understood.
Is there any cultural or religious reasons for it to be twenty-eight feet in height?
Yeah. Right, so there are many other exhibits that we have, so culturally, we could say that, and we just picked five of ones that are around the country and around the world.
But are there cultural or religious reasons for it to be twenty-eight, not if there are other examples?
That I can't speak to.
It's more of a religious one. So the twenty-eight, basically, the number that represents the insignificance in the Jainism, so that's the reason it's just twenty-eight feet.
Thank you.
And again, just, just briefly for, since I put this exhibit up here, we might, might as well make this A three. This is sample images, entered skates to Jain centers worldwide, planning board exhibit, and it was dated six, seven, twenty-twenty-three. And I guess my point on these, these are, except for the lower left, which is somewhat similar size, these are all vastly larger structures and entrances, but those properties are also vastly larger and larger buildings and larger complexes. So again, back to my planning testimony, I believe that we sized the sign well for this property, not just saying, we're going to take, you know, what Jain centers around the country or world have built, because they are massively bigger. We think we've sized it, noting the religious connotation that was just discussed, and, and worked it into this property.
So Mitch, are, are these signs also twenty-eight feet high?
No, they're, these are all much greater than twenty-eight feet, the one in, you know.
Is that, is that all, so I'm just trying to connect it with the religious side of things?
So, so these are the signs that you see, is most of them are from India, right? And India, they do have a flexibility to go up to thirty-six feet. So some of them will be anywhere between twenty-eight to thirty-six is what the different variances we will see.
Okay. So Mitch, from an engineering perspective, thinking about things like fire trucks and things like that, ingress egress, what would that height have to be?
So the, it's for any canopy that we do in town, it's basically fourteen feet, three inches is the fire truck clearance for, John House always requests, and that's, so the bottom of the sign, we clear that.
Okay, so fourteen, three would be our, and then this one is twenty-eight, so this is double?
Yeah, but the, that's the, the top, the, the bottom of that is, is lower, but still clear. Mitch, why don't you put the detail of the proposal? So, yeah, so, so, and I, I will say that as far as the clearance, that is one of the things, and just to make it clear, everybody, I think all the applicants do this, because I think with the TRC reports, when we first started them, they used my memo as a template, so everybody refers to them as Mark's reports. But just to be clear to the board, when you see it's from the technical review committee, it's not just for me. And this is actually important for you to understand. So when we have an application that doesn't necessarily need to have a separate report from health, et cetera, we meet every Tuesday morning, and certain applications, we put the plans out on the table, and as a group, we prepare, we, we, we provide comments. One of the members, it may be me, it may, depending on the type of application, another staff member will produce a draft, then we'll go over it again and make sure, okay, does this incorporate everybody's comments? The reason I bring this up is, so for example, the clearance underneath that structure, I don't opine on that. That would have been John House. So I can say that, that we have no comment in their TRC report. It looks like it's fourteen feet, four inches, so John House was okay with the clearance underneath the arch.
Yeah, I was sort of almost trying to pressure test, if it were to be lower, like, how much lower could it be? If it's already at fourteen, whatever, then we're pretty much at the lowest we can get it to with maintaining the height the other way.
Correct.
All right, that's, that's what I was trying to, thank you.
And let me, if I could, I, I just want to speak a little bit to the sign question. You know, as I was saying before, it, well, our ordinance addresses building-mounted signs, freestanding signs. This is something of a unique, so you kind of, somewhat of a unique animal. You know, one of my other hats is the zoning officer, and as a zoning officer, I, I get to make a call, and I get to make a determination. So, you know, I, I, when looking at this, you know, this is most similar to a freestanding sign. And in a freestanding sign, you typically will have one message, one sign, you know, it's the shopping center, it's the place of worship that it's, that it's announcing, it's usually not split up into multiple messages. So that's why, for the purpose of the number of signs, I originally, we originally thought it was three, now we understand it's five. And then the same thing, what the, the intent of the sign ordinance, we're talking about freestanding signs, it's supposed to be no more than ten feet, so you don't have something two hundred feet up in the air. You know, again, this is somewhat of a unique animal, just the structure is twenty-eight feet, so identify that as a variance, again, because the intent is, okay, we want to keep them twenty-five square feet, only twenty-five, ten foot off the ground. So, so that, again, those are the most similar requirements to this proposal, so that's why essentially I made the determination that those were the variances.
Yeah, that makes sense. Anybody else want to give any, any comment?
Yeah, I want to, I want to come back. I have one other question regarding the number twenty-eight. I did a quick search, and I don't see it being honored, I see the number twenty-four. So did you intend to say twenty-four or twenty-eight?
So there's twenty-four, twenty-seven, thirty-six, there are different means, and similarly, twenty-eight has a different meaning. I will send you the more details on that.
Okay, the, the other part was, did you state whether or not the minimum clearance is at fourteen? What's the clearance right now, under the arch?
Fourteen feet, four inches.
Okay, thanks.
May I? No, you didn't. So I, I think we, I think Mitch, you have some pretty good, good feedback. I think from the comments, if I were to integrate them, I can think, I think I can confidently state the board appreciates the difference between this and, you know, a Dunkin' Donuts with a sign on the front and a sign on the back. We appreciate the religious implications that have been testified to tonight. And, you know, so you have your feedback on your signs, and, and you can amend the application and come back without prejudice, right? You still want the five? We've gotten some feedback about maybe whether, you know, the board considers the, the donor signs on the bottom, whether, whether those are the best place for them. You know, that's still your call. So there's no, there's nothing you couldn't come back with, you know, based on, based on what you've heard tonight.
Thank you, and we, we will request it to carry the application and, and have that opportunity to.
I, I am still bound to open to the public despite the fact that we will not have a vote, so I make a motion to open to the public for any comment on this application.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any member of the public wishing to come forward? Oh, no, if you come to the podium, use a microphone, state your name and address, please.
Spell your last name.
And spell your last name, please.
I am Hari Ayer, last name is I Y E R, and I am a resident in the townhouses on the south side of the property. I don't have any objection with the arch or any of those things, as long as it doesn't impede the free flow of traffic on Cedar Avenue. Because the traffic goes up, and if you watch the traffic in the morning, between the time of eight to nine, or eight to ten, similarly, in the evening, on the other side, between the time of four to seven, the traffic is too dense. Most of the congregation which happens in the community center happens over the weekend. That time also, the traffic is very dense. So you've got to worry about the traffic. I have no problems on the arch itself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Behn, B E H N, I live at nineteen Domino Road. I guess I'm part of what you call the R fifteen zone, the single-family homes in behind the Jain Center. And I just have a few comments for the board to consider. I think some of you are already on the same wavelength as I am, as far as the Jain Center's ability to be a good neighbor. We saw nine acres of trees cut down in two thousand and one, and building not start again until twenty-twelve, I think it was. So I'm concerned about the trees, I'm concerned about the landscaping. We were promised back in twenty-twelve, I think it was, that there would be a buffer along that back edge where the right-of-way is for the pipeline. And it's, I mean, I've lived there thirty years, we haven't, this has been up since twenty-twelve, and we haven't seen any, any landscaping go in on that side. And I've been here before, I think when the solar panels were being talked about, and there was reiteration that the Jain Center needs to come through and, and put that together. So when I hear tonight that there's going to be landscaping and there's going to be buffering and all of that great stuff, I, I don't believe it. I just, I just don't think it's going to happen. The other thing I'm concerned about as a resident is the light pollution. Are these, are these signs lighted?
So there's only going to be, from the residents, obviously, it's on the far side of the building, on the Cedar Grove side, so they're only going to be the flush-mounted lights.
And are those twenty-four hours, or only at night, or what are they?
Yeah, just at, at night and when you're in, in festivals and in service, so they'll be, they'll be off after.
Right, because, because another issue we have on our side, on the neighborhood side, is the lights. There's a, there's a lot of light coming off the buildings. I don't know whether it's parking lights. I noticed there was a red glow last night, that was actually kind of cool, all right? I didn't have any problem with that, there was some kind of celebration. But as a general night-to-night kind of thing... Um, but as a general night-to-night kind of thing, um, it would be nice if there's some kind of an auto-off, I, you know, again, I know they're concerned about, uh, people on the property that shouldn't be there, but there has to be some kind of a, you know, we need a little relief from the lights. So I'm concerned about lighting on the sign, if there is any lighting on the sign. Um, and I think that's all I really have to say, except just from a personal's perspective, this seems very large for Cedar Grove Lane, this, this structure. And, you know, I heard, uh, people say it's a good sense of place, uh, follows the architecture of the temple, um, which is all well and good, but it also needs to follow the architecture of the community and the surrounding buildings and its place within the larger place of Cedar Grove Lane and that intersection. This just seems very overwhelming to me as a resident here.
Thank, thank you very much. Um, do you know other members of the public move to close?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, so.
Okay, just one question.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Mr. Healy, does the structure itself need any variances, or it's just because it has the signage on it?
No, there's no, no, no variances related to the structure itself.
Okay, so the structure could be built, if they wanted to build it without signage, they could build it, other than the fact that there's an issue over the condition from the prior approval, it could be built with just a building permit.
Well, that's a different question.
Right, no, no, I understand, but there's no, no variances needed.
No variances, but, but I, I, I would say that they would need site plan approval.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
So, uh, during religious festivals, do you anticipate coming back for a variance to put up another structure, uh, for gatherings, um, you know, tents or anything of that on the property?
Uh, we just had one big event last year, and that point of time, we have come up with an approval for putting up a temporary tent for those days. But apart from that, any of our major event throughout the year, we have got seven major events that we run into the center, which is more for our religious days. But apart from that, and for that also, we don't need any of the additional tent or stuff like that. Last year was a big event that we had, and that is a reason where we have asked for the variance in there.
Okay.
And also, you know, uh, one of the requests that we have received from the board last time, when we came in here, we made sure that anything which is like a heavy traffic days that we're going to have within the center, we are seeking up the police, uh, you know, uh, police support for making sure that, you know, the safety has been taken care of. The third thing, I think one of the board member mentioned about, that the fire lane was open, we have taken a variance for, uh, we have taken an approval and make sure that we have an additional police on the, on the ground to allow us, you know, operating that for that big day that we had it over the weekend. So just wanna make sure that.
And a follow-up question, so you just brought up something else. What about the, the, from a noise perspective during the festivals?
So we may ensure that, you know, most of our festivals stays within the premises, it's not going out, except one or two in the entire year. So we make sure that, you know, it is not a hazard for the neighbors that stays around it.
Okay.
To, the other thing is about this, uh, the lightning part, right? Like the, uh, street light or basically the parking lights. We had an auto timer which goes off at eleven o'clock, so most of the time, eleven o'clock, you will see that lights will go off on the parking lot. So we have made it our timer to ensure that, because at the end of the day, if we keep it on, on entire night, it's going to have our electricity bill go up the roof. So we will make sure that we control our expenses, so we have taken care of that.
Another follow-up question. So during, um, do you, you, you have weddings, right?
Yeah.
So is there a barat that comes and is there, is the?
No, so this is completely religious activity, there is nothing that we allow any social, any, any social function is allowed within the premises.
Megaphones, okay.
Yeah. Except, you know, for example, now we had this big festival, uh, we just completed today. So now, oh, next week, where we will have, you know, a little procession around the center, where all the people who has done like seven days, sixteen days, twenty-one days fasting, we will just making sure that they go around the center, it's more like, uh, you know, we take the round on the circle, and then that's only where we will be seeing that.
Okay, so not loud music?
No, and only, uh, another instance where we do, again, it's not a music, but that is a, you know, every year, we have a festival where we celebrate our anniversary. At that point of time, if you walk it or pass through that, you know, you will see that there's on the top, we have, uh, you know, a clock running around, so we have to replace or we have to change that every year. So that is only the activity which is outside. Rest, all the activities throughout the year is within, in, inside the premises, not on the parking area.
Okay, one last question.
Sure.
So on the sign, will you at any particular time during the year have any flags or banners?
No.
Okay.
No. Sammy, did you have one last thing to say?
Yeah, it was just a comment that, I mean, to the lights, it, it just struck me as having that extra shrubbery and things like that would probably actually work not only to beautify the, the center, but also to help your neighbors out a lot. So I think that should probably be a priority for you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so that's Sammy scaring me tonight because he, yeah. Um, yeah, I mean, I think if there's a theme, since you're, you know, newly, I guess, in, in charge of, of, of the center, um, I, I think that what you've heard from the board tonight is perfect the original application as you, as you revise the current, right? You've heard from the neighbor, you can do neighbors. Um, you know, that, that's the biggest thing, that, that goes a long way, right? To, to establishing trust. And I think what you've heard from the board tonight is a little bit of lack of trust, that stuff is gonna happen. Um, you know, and, and to the one, to, one person's comment about they'll never see trees, that original application, it's there forever. Twenty years down the road, some center, you know, one across the street, for example, the shopping center, let's say all the trees die because of a disease or something, they cut them all down, they never replace them. They're still bound to have what was on that original site plan. So just work on that, and I think that'll help a whole lot when it comes to like, whatever you propose in the future. Because I think the board has a lack of trust that, why should we believe something when it hasn't happened?
We'll make all our efforts to make sure that, you know, we'll try and, uh, do what we've promised for, so.
There's also, uh, one other thing you could do would be great P R and help, help your, uh, client. Within, uh, four hundred feet, there's eight major intersect, uh, driveways. On down the street, you have four other churches, three other schools, and a housing complex that's coming online. When you meet with the county, you could ask them to start considering lowering the speed limit. Make some of the excitement out of crossing the street and pulling out of a driveway. And if you do that, then maybe they'll get tired, they, they will get less tired of me calling. It's, it is a master plan recommendation to do that. That's what I meant when I mentioned that, from my point of view, we get very little from the county.
Ted, you have one, one other comment, and then let's wrap it up.
Yeah, well, I just want to complete Mr. Thomas's comment. We get very little from the county except signs announcing the, of a bike lane.
But, Mr. Chairman, quickly on the landscaping, what I would suggest is, so I think when the plan was originally approved way back when, there was obviously very minimal landscaping on that plan. When the applicant came in a number of years ago for the solar, they proposed to address that. Since they never did the solar, they never put that landscaping in. Now on this plan, they, they're once again proposing to correct that to some degree, because they are proposing landscaping in the rear. What I would suggest is two things. Um, I would suggest that, um, uh, Mr. Ardenman's firm meet with me to go over, because I think some of the, the locations are, um, I'll just say a little bit out of, out of date, I think they're going on the old plans and new landscape or vegetation has grown up, so some of the comments were, you're putting this where there, it already exists. I think that should occur. If the resident wants to, to meet with me, my name's Mark Healy, I'm on the website, if you wanna meet with me, I can go over those, the plans with you, show you what they're proposing. If you have any comments that you want to give me, I can communicate that to the applicant, so maybe some of your comments can be incorporated in the plans before they come back to the board. Just make an appointment, because I don't want you to come to the counter and I'm somewhere else. So that, that's what, I think that would be the most efficient, and then when they, hopefully, if that occurs, when they come back to you, there'll be a nice, you know, hopefully cleaner report from the TRC.
It'd be great. Ted, last, wrap us, send us, send us home, because we'll, we're, we're gonna hear this again, so we'll, we'll go, but please.
Now, um, if this were a house or a commercial structure, uh, there would have to be a certificate of occupancy, and if there were a question of long-awaited, um, landscaping, we could say that the landscaping must be installed before the structure can have a certificate of occupancy. Now, I, you probably don't have to have a certificate of occupancy for an archway, but is there something of this nature that we could put into a resolution to assure that the landscaping is put in as, as long been promised?
Let me think about the best way to do that. I mean, you're correct, there is no, I mean, there is a certificate of, um, I think they call it approval, you know, after it's built, but once it's built, it's built. Um, you know, theoretically, you could say that the landscaping needs to be put in before a building permit is issued. That's.
Yeah. Peter says there is a way to do this, so we can, we can frame that up at the proper time. But good idea. Okay, so, um, two administrative things. Erica, you came in too late, so if there was a vote tonight, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have been able to permit you to participate. If you, uh, watch the video, um, uh, read the minutes and sign what Christine will give you when they come back, you will be eligible then, just like we do with B nine. Um, and will you get back to us with a future date? We're not, we're just gonna say, we're gonna continue. Oh, okay. So no date yet, but you'll work with us for that? Well, you'll have to re- re-notice?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna.
Yeah, so I was just about to say.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
There's, um, there's November, we only have one meeting in November. Um, and on November first is Five Hundred Atrium and Goldie, which I think is your firms, they are penciled in. Uh, that would be something that your firm would have to discuss and see if they want to carry it to this time. Uh, I can list them on here and pencil this, uh, Jane Center, and you would have to get back to me and say if that, if that's acceptable to, um, your firm, because they, they already have, uh, two people, two applicants on there. Not until January. We, we are booked to, till January. Uh, December twentieth is the same thing, there's four matters that are, are from all your firm, uh, they're all penciled in as well. The reason I say penciled is because they're going back and forth with maybe redoing plans or something like that. So again, that, that's another time, perhaps you can make it, is December twentieth.
Yeah, let me, let me just, if I could suggest for your consideration, continuing to November first. As Christine said, as of right now, they're kind of penciled in, we don't know if they are a hundred percent coming or not. Um, we do have to continue for, unless, unless you're gonna re-notice, you have to continue to a date certain.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that.
It has to get bumped again, it has to get, it can bump again.
I mean, one, one thing I can absolutely assure you, because in the twenty years I've been on this board in some capacity, or, or maybe even a bit longer, I've yet to see it happen, that everything that's penciled in down the road, happens. It, something always gets carried, sometimes multiple things get carried, um, just as they did tonight. So, um, yeah, I mean, with the warehouse thing, so, yeah, just, so November first? Do you need to say something special, or?
No, I mean, just that this, just that this matter is being carried to November first here at four seventy-five Demont Lane at seven thirty P M. No further notification is needed since this announcement is being made, and it will also be reflected on the, um, summary of action that is posted to the website.
They, they did extend the deadline for action, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what. We will consent to another extension.
Yeah, you would have to, you're saying it on tape, but you will still have to send a letter giving me, uh, probably till November thirtieth, just till the end of the month.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
November fifteenth?
I haven't heard from Erica. You can't make it, you said? So November fifteenth?
This, this would be for a special meeting, it's not, it's on a Wednesday, that's the good news.
There's only five members available.
Oh, that's a quorum. This is for the, this is for what we're carrying tonight, the, the warehouse.
Okay, so, so November fifteenth.
I mean, it's, it's, doesn't give us much margin for error, somebody gets sick, you know, we're, we're not gonna have a meeting. So, um, you know, plans are always, you know, the best of intentions, but stuff happens. So, um.
Okay, so then I'll make the announcement that Davidson Plaza N J L L C, P L N twenty-three zero 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 nine, uh, will be carried to November fifteenth, that would be a special meeting. It has to be placed on the, um, agenda, the website, all that, because it's not there right now. Um, and as of right now, we do have five members that can be available, which would be a quorum. Pete, you said that you would be able to?
I can make it work.
Okay, you can make it work, so we'll have, and, um, we'll, I'll make all the notifications that need to, to happen.
Sounds good. Um, and with that, I make a motion to adjourn for tonight.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Don't forget about, um, next week, those of you, um, Tuesday, um, and Route twenty-seven.
It is a Tuesday night meeting, which is not of regular, um, I'm sure you have to be at the council meeting.
So we moved the council meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was unaware. Okay, so, so, um, the meeting will be held at, at Route twenty-seven, so just, and it is a Tuesday at seven thirty.
Tuesday, Tuesday, not Wednesday, Tuesday, Tuesday, Tuesday.
Yeah.